We're going to call to order the Hanson Planning Board meeting for Monday, July 24, 2023, the time being 6:30 PM here in the lower level of Town Hall, the Select Board Meeting Room at 542 Liberty Street. Prior to going into our agenda, I would like to state that I hereby call on July 24, 2023, a meeting of the Town of Hanson Planning Board to order at 6:30 PM. I would also like to announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on Women Hanson Community Access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found at WHCA.tv. Again, that's W-W-W dot WHCA dot TV. In attendance tonight, what is called to order is a full board as well as our Town Planner, Town Administrator Planner Administrative Assistant's office tonight?
Uh, yes, she was not feeling well this evening.
Oh, that's too bad. We hope she's feeling better. So we have the Town Planner as well as a full board. The first item of business on our agenda this evening is to go into a public hearing executive session that will not take place until 6:35. I then entertain a motion to take the agenda out of business if we'd like to get the minutes from July 10th up. So motions made by Mr. Benonato, seconded by Mr. Ellis, thank you very much. We're going to take the agenda out of order and we're going to go down to some quick board business. Does anybody have any questions in regards to, can you review the July 10th, 2023 meeting Motion's been made by Mr. Kemet to approve the minutes for July 10th, 2023. Seconded, motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion in regards to the motion? Seeing none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Got a couple of minutes left. How about taking the endorsed board member's signature authorization form for plans and any related document? Do you need these both re-signed, Tony?
Those are the two forms that the last time we tried this, it was everyone was signing not next to their name.
All right. So I have the one clean copy?
You have a clean copy. So everyone, if they just sign next to their own name, that'd be great.
I think you can sign it out real immediately and see if anyone even bothers. Did you get a poll, John?
Oh, yeah, it's two.
Screwed it up already.
One for the registry, one for the land.
What did you say, one for the registry, one for the land?
No, one for the registry, one for the land court.
Oh, one for the land. I thought you said one for the land. Here, bring back. It's two pages. Use the blackie, we'll put on the same page. He's got a steel craft. Wait, is he a steel craft?
Yep.
Nice.
Could a bolt on them not work?
Well, they probably can write upside down, used by astronauts. Signed by the military.
So that would be the cheapest?
Yeah, it's a $13 pair. Break on you after four years, isn't it?
Unless it's a government project, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so those are two up. Seeing that the time is 6:35. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes for May 8, 2023, and June 12, 2023. This is a roll call vote. Roll call vote to go into executive session. Mr. Benonato?
Yeah.
Mr. uh, Ms. Ellis?
Yeah.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Kemet?
Aye.
And I am an aye. We are now in executive session. The time is 7:00 PM. We're back to our regular open session agenda for Monday, July 24th. 7:00 PM, we have a continued public hearing request for continuance for Meadowbrook Farms' residential subdivision Zero County Road, assesses map 74, block zero, lot seven and eight, applicant Ellis Building and Development, not to be in connection with our own. Mr. Ellis, Representatives Morse Engineering Company Incorporated. Town Planner?
Uh, the, the engineer is asking for a continuance to the August 14th meeting. They have today submitted revised plans, drainage calculations, and a letter addressing the second peer review letter by Verdantis and the, I believe it's the second or third peer review letter by Weston and Sampson, I believe it was for the conservation. They also had a discussion with Verdantis and the Weston and Sampson folks while I was on vacation to try and address all the concerns and present their thoughts and see if that was acceptable to the peer reviewers, and they've revised the plans accordingly. My understanding, the main focus was the, we'll say, lower detention basin. That detention basin, as you know, is in essence two basins, one's at a higher elevation than the other. So I guess the proposal is to take the lower basin and raise it so that there is four foot of separation between the water table and the bottom of the basin and not take any credit for, I believe it's infiltration in that basin. So it'll be bringing in more fill and raising it, and so that's what these plans, I have not looked at the plans, they just came in this afternoon.
Sure.
But they, I guess that's, that's the biggest change. At one of our last meetings, there was discussion about the earth removal and potentially, I did look into the earth removal general bylaw. It's strictly earth removal, there is not, there is, there is no language in there regarding bringing in fill.
Where's the mistake? Procedurally, procedurally, are we in a, are we in a situation right now where the applicant is having appearances before conservation on things that the planning board hasn't reviewed or approved yet?
Well, the conservation is looking at anything conservation related, and so they're addressing that. The planning board is dealing with anything under subdivision control law. There is overlap.
Right.
And so the, they're addressing, Verdantis and Weston and Sampson are in essence saying the same thing.
Okay.
In the overlap.
Okay.
And so they're addressing that and so the concern. Um, so that's what my understanding for the detention basin. And also they, they've done a, what's called the institute test to determine this type of soils in the water and that it came out better than they expected. So the soil may not be as poor as, let's say, the maps may indicate. Obviously, the maps have, you know, a very broad indication of what type of soils are out there, but once you get into doing these tests, you get it better. You may find that the soil is a bit different, um, because soil can change, you know, quickly.
Just want to make sure that after you take a look at those, can you review this? Just to make sure that none of the, obviously not the planning board's jurisdiction, if there's any, there's any changes to that, or much rather have them come and get the approval from the board before they go to conservation.
Yeah, I think the whole idea is to try and get, obviously, conservation satisfied, the planning board satisfied, and so that when the plans are approved by whether it's this board or the conservation, everyone's approving the same plan.
Mr. Kemet?
I think what, what, what I'm hearing Joe say though is that, which comes first, the chicken and the egg, you know? Like, if the conservation commission is approving something that hasn't, that needs to be approved by the planning board, the planning board should approve it before conservation says yes. I think, you know, just, I know that's semantics at some point.
Actually, they, they're trying to get it so that it'll be approved at the same time.
Okay.
You know, that's the whole goal, I think, for the, for the engineer. Obviously, to have Verdantis is satisfied, Weston and Sampson is satisfied, then say, okay, once the peer review is completely satisfied, then hopefully the, the boards will say, okay, that our peer reviewers are, they're happy and we're, you know, let's say just the planning board, you're happy with the way it's done, and then the same plans get approved.
Do you think, let's see, the next planning board meeting is going to be in August of 14?
August of 14.
Do you think at that time, that's going to be finished? I wonder if it should be requesting to have Italian Hanson's peer review present during that meeting?
Yes.
Um, and then the other side of this is that there's been no other, as, you know, trickle down, there's been no other waiver requests or, you know, any changes, significant changes that would change the project that we need to be concerned about. Right now, what we're doing is, they had an approval and then there was a change, and right now we're weighing in on the changes.
Correct.
But if the changes have changed too much, that may have the board have to go back to the original approval to look at it to see if it's, it's a whole project changed. Do you maybe in this like?
Yeah, is it new or is it a modification, which is what we started with in the beginning?
Yeah, where does the, where does the fine line go between just a modification and a full-on change?
Yeah, has the modification become such, so different from the original design that in essence it becomes a brand new?
Yeah.
That's the things that I had kicked up to the attorneys and he saw what they had come up with in their, in their decisions.
Okay.
So, uh, there, from what I've seen, that, you know, they're not changing, the, the biggest thing becomes that detention basin.
Right.
And the separation to groundwater, that's been the biggest challenge for them. And it's either they do a groundwater, groundwater mounding analysis, which they, I guess would prefer not to go do, and so they're raising the basin to have that four-foot separation.
So can I ask a question? Like, the raising of the basin, right, does that affect anything else at all on any service? Because if it does, doesn't it become more significant than just the raising of the basin, you know?
Other than obviously bringing in more fill, um, does it, is there anything more significant?
Does it change the direction of the wind or rain?
No, not, not really, you know? I mean, the whole idea and, believe me, I understand where the rebuttals are coming from, but the whole idea is when you, you put all this information into the hydro cad, you, you, you have to be equal or less than what's coming off there now, when you're done building it. And I know it, it, it can seem like, yeah, it's great in theory, but how do you, is it, how does it work in, in real world application?
As well as the next appearance, Tony, can you spend a little bit of time looking at those plans and give it, give it some bullet notes, maybe an email?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, yeah. All right, any other questions from the board? So we have before us a letter from Mr. Jeff Hassett, representing Morse Engineering, dated and stamped July 20th, 2023, for an extension of time for decision of Hanson Planning Board, uh, extension request to August 14th, 2023, which is the tentative next scheduled date for our planning board meeting. Motion's been made by Mr. Kemet to accept. Seconded, motion's been made by Mr. Kemet to accept the extension letter and seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. What's today's meeting? So, Tony. Get that back to Tony. I just initial that, Tony's the man. All right, we have no appointments this evening. We've gotten rid of two of our board businesses. Board member subcommittee updates. Myself on open space, again, reached out to Mr. Clemens. We should be starting to have some movement in the month of August, I'm hoping. I don't know about the other members, but as long as we have myself, Mr. Clemens, and I think there's a third person that's being, going to be interested, I don't know if the rest of it, the former open space is going to be the same. So somebody may have to be appointed to that from the board, from the select board, and if that's the case, I'm going to request that in the first month of, first week of August through the select board to ask them to appoint it so we can get the ball rolling, because our master plan is just around the corner and that's a big part of it. OCPC, there was some recent news from OCPC, and I was talking with the town planner about it in regards to brownfields funding. It looks as though they're, the Tommy Hanson has been grouped in with a few surrounding and budding towns in regards to some funding that came in for some brownfield studies. It doesn't specifically say the exact property within the Tommy Hanson, but it does talk about the, around the corridor of the train station and mentions a cranberry building, cranberry processing building. So we'll see where that goes and where that information transpires from there. So that's in regards to some funds coming out from OCPC. And the town planner has also updated that OCPC is going to be offering plenty of assistance that we have, will be paying for in regards to the upcoming master plan.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Ellis?
Uh, nope, nothing really ever to talk about.
All right. What's next steps in regards to the park? Getting the plans released, is that what, where we, are things a little?
I'm still waiting for the finished plans. We had, had an appointment last Tuesday with the, Mr. Sheen on testing the road, the road that's here now, never showed up. I had, I had the highway department come up and open up the facility and, I waited until around 10 o'clock, it was supposed to be there at nine, but no answer. So it looks like I gotta find somebody else.
Does the, is the well, is the plant being released dependent on the well being checked out?
Well, what we're trying to do is figure out what irrigation.
Oh, okay.
And using the existing well that was there for the hospital and the facilities. Um, it hasn't been used for a long time. I don't know when the, our queue went on to the town water, but we were trying to see if we could use it and then set up the design for the, underneath the roadways for crossovers for the irrigation sprinklers and things like that, so we know that ahead of time, so it could be planned, roadway plans. And if that's the case we can't use it, then we're going to have to use wells.
And the engineer, the engineer for the plants?
I didn't.
The engineer for the plant, land plan?
Land plan, okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Cohen, economic development committee?
Economic development, we have a meeting this Wednesday where we're going to be continued discussion for a, we're going to be sending out an outreach, outreach letter to local businesses, um, you know, kind of letting us know, letting the local businesses know that we're there to help and spur economic growth for the businesses. We're also going to be doing some like spotlight videos where the, these businesses will have an opportunity to, you know, have like a video on social media and kind of spur some growth with that video. So it's, it's a pretty exciting time. We also have Hanson Day coming up, that we're going to be doing a lot of work on that, getting local businesses that would like to be a part of that Hanson Day. We'll be looking for, you know, some vendors that will want to be at that Hanson Day as well. I know they're, they're looking for maybe like a dancer or musical type performance to be there. It is a free event, so it's usually quite a fun day for people that just come out and, you know, just see what's going on around town.
Do you mean like a dance academy? I just don't want some?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think really.
Jingle of the show, yeah?
Yeah, I know, yeah. More like a dance academy.
All right, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kemet? CPC?
Uh, we meet on the second week of August. We haven't met since the last time that you asked me that question.
Is it easier to understand what CPC money can't be spent on as opposed to what it can be spent on?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Absolutely. You want to look at what it can't be spent on than anything else, right?
Yeah, so it's a shorter list for can't be spent on? I had somebody ask for that the other day.
Yeah.
Cool. Uh, Mr. Benonato, Drainage and Stormwater Committee?
Well, they have been radio silent since last, after last town meeting. Could try to get it together again in September.
Jamison must be on that, right, from the highway director?
I think so.
Who's the chairman?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Dave Mansfield.
Dave Mansfield?
Yeah.
I was going to say, after all this recent voice recognition, the rain, that'd be bad. Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else will they go to order in regards to board subcommittee updates? Moving on, administration, Town Planner, okay?
Uh, first thing is a voucher that's actually, I was not aware of, that's going to be encumbered for a whole dollar and 96 cents. WB Mason, so I need, I need the board to sign off on that so I can turn that into accounting.
Definitely wasn't a steel craft. What's crazy is that this, that's printing, the dollar 96 isn't even worth the paper it's printed on.
Yeah, I happened.
Why was that for?
It was for a highlighter. What's happened is the W, for some reason WB Mason, the invoices for the planning board are going to the executive assistant.
One highlighter?
Yeah, one highlighter. And, uh, so when I went down there to look up, get an invoice, I was trying to get the invoice before the end of the fiscal year, and I went and saw the executive assistant, and then she said, oh, by the way, there's another one here for a dollar 96. And I said, dollar 96? No way, I ordered some for just a dollar 96. She goes, no, it's to you. And I'm like, highlighter? You ordered a highlighter for a dollar 96?
I didn't know you could order just one.
Did they drive that big truck all the way over here for us?
I, you know, I still look at it and go, I just don't believe that I would order one thing. So.
Twenty dollars in gas, forget it.
Yeah, so, so the unfortunate part is when I found out about it, it was very, you know, basically a day late and just under two dollars short.
Listen, the next time anybody in the planning office needs a highlighter, if you open up any one of these drawers down here, I think there's probably 20 of them. That's crazy. I didn't know you could order just one. All right, that's fine.
Um, so, the next thing is Pratt Place. I had attempted to pursue a grant through what's known as the municipal small bridge grant program. Unfortunately, so for two, 2024, so I submitted it before the deadline, which was the 30th of June, but the application was denied by the state because the span needs to be 10 feet and that one is eight. And they actually sent me a photograph of the measurement that they took. If we had been able to get that grant, which I think Pratt Place really fits into, it would have been a hundred thousand dollar grant towards design and $400,000 towards construction.
Is the 10-foot ambiguous? Who's, who's determining the 10, like eight feet?
Mastod and their bridge engineer.
Are they boots on the ground or have they taken something from?
No, they were boots on the ground. They actually sent a photograph of someone measuring with the tape measure, and it shows it 96 inches.
You're talking about the width?
Uh, yeah, the span is only eight feet, so not necessarily the width, but the crossing. So the distance between the one end to the other, they say is eight feet, and you need 10. So the only other grant for that street would be basically like the street, it's like a, what's it, a stream crossing grant where you're talking about putting like an arch culvert, I mean, it's crazy.
Is there, is there an appeal to that?
For three houses. Not that I have read that said there's an appeal. So, um, this is something that maybe successor, give them information and be like, hey, or maybe, uh, we could reach out through our local representation and maybe try and plead the case there, because this one, they, they release drawings, let's say, figure A, figure B, figure C, which one of yours fits?
Sure.
And so Pratt Place fits into like figure B, but it's because it's less than 10 feet, they say, no. And it's one of those things where you just go, man, you know, and it doesn't have a bridge number, but if we can't get it through that, the other, the other program is just really not the best program that fit. This would be the one that would fit, you know? Because it really, there's three houses on the other side and one piece of vacant property, which you could, it's, it needs zoning, so it could be another house.
Sure.
Or if someone decided to put a comprehensive permit on it. And that culvert needs to get repaired definitely within the next two to five years tops. So if we cannot get it through the small bridge program, maybe next fiscal or asking our local representatives to reach out to Mastod and maybe plead our case, then the town's going to have to find ways to fund, fund the repair.
Can I just, Mr. Kemet? Can you send me the stuff that I would need to present to somebody so that they could understand where I'm coming from?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do.
Mr. Board have consent, Mr. Kemet taking that information and bringing it on to State Legislature. Great, thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Kemet, thanks for volunteering for that.
So that's, that's that one. Uh, Stone Hill Estates.
You can't leave two feet. That's got to be ambiguous. Stone Hill Estates.
So Stone Hill Estates, obviously the warrant closed on August the 6th, and I've already had a, a visit from probably a third resident on that street regarding the fact that it's a private way. It was, obviously it was approved as a public way in 2006 through this, 2005 through the select board, 2006 through town meeting.
Just a point, what is Stone Hill Estates is AKA Litchfield Lane and Tagway?
Uh, Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way.
Proudfoot Way, thank you.
And so in 2006, it was accepted through town meeting, within 120 days, the town didn't take title, therefore fell through the cracks. So, um, I had reached out to town council to say, okay, look, you know, depending on where you read regarding procedure for roadway acceptance, you know, some language will tell you in essence, let's say there's 10 steps, and some language, it makes you, gives you the inference that you have to go back to step one. So I reached out to town council and basically, no, it's sort of like step seven. So we're in the good spot, which is it has to go back before town meeting. The, there's a, some roadway as-built mile hours upstairs, I think I mentioned this before, there's two sets, one that was endorsed by the previous board at that time, and another that's a blank set. So I'm working with town council to try and get this squared away and hopefully get this on, get a warrant written and get this on for October town meeting.
Okay. So can we give a placeholder?
Uh, if you had to, you know, but I.
Because you feel like you can get it done before October, right? Like all this.
Yeah, I'm hoping to get it all squared away before the 6th, so I, and that's, I'd like to get this squared away before I leave, so it's like, you know, or have you in a good spot, you know? Because if, I, I, what I'm trying to find out from Kate is it's, is, look, and I asked her the question, it's, can we just use the plans that were endorsed in 2006 by that planning board, you know? And they've already been endorsed and just warrant, there's the plans, go do your thing and get it recorded, done, versus having to say, bring it before the board, you have to endorse it. I think that's probably the cleanest way, is just take those plans that were endorsed by the 2006 or 2005 board and use those and get them, and then record them. Um, and hopefully I'd like to get this squared away, either done by the 6th or it need be a placeholder, because I guess the, the way the administration's making it sound is like, hey, the 6th is deadline and that, because we're, we're not, we don't want to have any goof ups when it comes to October town meeting.
Sure.
You know, so it's very, it was, we'll say it's very hard, a hard deadline, you know?
So, uh, why couldn't we vote at this meeting, right, to accept the signatures of the, the two thousand five, uh, mile, you know, endorse that? Just so that, you know, like, uh, this, so basically we're motioning and voting to accept the fact that we were okay with, uh, signing of that in two thousand five. It's kind of the same thing.
That's, that's if you, if you, if you feel comfortable doing something like that. It's up to the board.
Yeah, it's just, you know, you know, for the sake of the warrant article getting put in and this getting done, like we've talked about this for years, trying to get this over. Accepted the way they should be, so, uh, all I'm really saying is, you know, uh, let's endorse the endorsement.
Do you want to put it on for a quick review at the next meeting so we can get eyes on the plans and then we can move to it?
You know, I think the warrant can go in, you know, and the plan, the plan isn't that, the plan is probably isn't that big of a deal as far as the warrant is concerned. It's just getting it on the warrant. And then, once it gets to town meeting, it's an appro, and it's approved, then those plans can just be used. So I, I, I'm more interested in just getting the warrant squared away with the proper language so that it can go to town meeting.
Cause I, I guess what I'm saying is like, you know, we, we can look at the plans all we want, but you know, in reality, there was a duly elected board that, uh, voted and signed those and their intent was to have this actually happen. So for us to go back and start, you know, looking at it and, you know, uh, blathering about what might, we might not like about it, I, I think the decision was already made. So I'm just assuming that if we just endorsed their endorsement, then we'll be, uh, in good shape.
Would you like to form that as a motion?
You may make me say that again. So, so move.
I understand Mr. Kement's comment in motion. Uh, Mr. Kement motions that we endorse the two thousand six plans.
Would it be endorse or accept?
Accept or endorse.
How about, uh?
Uh, Mr. Kement makes a motion to accept and endorse the two thousand six signatures.
Well, when you say to me endorse, it means like you're gonna put your signatures on something, is that what your intent? Or is it just to accept the endorsed roadway-
You need that from council.
Yeah.
So what, all I'm really saying is, uh, why can't we just in a meeting vote to accept the signatures of the people who already voted that?
So would it be something along the lines of to accept the endorsed roadway acceptance plans from two thousand five?
Yes, that's a good one. Let's do that. Okay, uh, so-
I got it.
All right.
Two thousand five?
It's two thousand five or two thousand six, I don't have the exact-
Two thousand six, I think was the correct.
You know, let me-
There was a, there was a denial in two thousand five and went on to two thousand six and that was approved in two thousand six.
You know what, let me take, uh-
So if it was approved in two thousand six, that's not signed.
Yeah.
So really all we're doing is endorsing the fact that the signatures were signed, that's the agreement. Accept it, or yeah, whatever is the wording you choose.
Stone, uh, you want to name the streets or you want to go by the project?
It's Stonewall Estates, which would be encompass Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way.
Eventually, we start trying to rethink it, in two thousand six, where would we be?
Mr. Kement has a motion on forward to accept the signatures of the roadway acceptance plans of two thousand six for Stonewall Estates, which encompass Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way. Is there a second? Motion's been made and properly seconded, but Mr. Benonato, is there any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, also favorite signifier saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So are we gonna have like town council review this to make sure that, um,
Yes.
Signing of signature, signing is okay?
Yeah, well, I, I'm gonna put all this together because I'm, like I said, I'm trying to work with Kate to get this squared away, uh, before I go. Cause I think that that's something that, you know, uh, should just get done because it was done in two thousand six. I mean, when everyone left that town meeting in two thousand six,
It should have been done.
They, they made the assumption that it was a public way.
That was it.
And it did.
I don't, I don't think it makes sense for us to start picking at the pot because-
Right, everything was accepted through reviewers and everything, it was ready to go and it was, it was voted on. So it's just a matter of procedure to get it back and get it to the hundred and twenty days. The O'Carney Planning Council will be coming before the board on August fourteenth to begin discussions of the master plan. I can't stress enough that the chair, the vice chair, or this board altogether really needs to take lead until someone is in my position to keep that moving forward. Is in not, don't, you know, because you have the money, you have them signed up.
Yeah.
Don't let it falter, you know? Uh, they're hoping to have the master plan updated by June of two thousand twenty-four, I believe is what the proposal said. So I'd really ask if nothing else, don't let this falter.
So can I ask you a question?
Kement?
Have, have you already, uh, reviewed the proposal? Like there was not a P that went out, right, for the master plan? And you looked at it and you feel like they're, what they're gonna present to us is right on point or?
Yeah, that's who was chosen to work with us is our, uh, and what wound up happening is at town meeting, they had to get an additional ten thousand dollars to help pay for their proposal. But yes, your lead on that is gonna be Laurie Muncy. So, you know, Laurie is familiar with the town, she was, did do my job some years ago. But I can't, like I said, I can't stress enough to, don't let that fall through the cracks. Get it, get it done, work with them and then once someone gets in this seat, you know, they can help. Just keep, keep moving forward. You know? The MBTA zoning, I have a district that was created with, I was working with, uh, O'Carney Planning Council, Dolly Fulgenetti, who's since moved on from most of PC. Uh, but before she did, we were able to establish a zoning, a zone. Just over like fifty acres. The requirement is seven hundred and fifty units in that zone. We have a capacity of seven hundred and fifty-nine. And, uh, I'm gonna put all the information together and some preliminary zoning bylaw that's basically based on the template that the state has provided. So it'll be a good foundation and, uh, I'll put this all together. Because what I'm, what I'm doing is, uh, before I go, I'd like to sit down with you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair. And I'm putting together a binder that's going to have all the projects that I was working on and what the status is.
Football?
Yeah, a football, a bible, whatever you want to call it, something that the next person, a handbook, can, you know, even yourselves, so that you can see what's going on, what's the status, what needs to be done. And I started working on that today. So maybe like next Tuesday night, we can get together and I'll go through it with you. And I'll even give you a copy of it. So that way you can have a copy of it. Uh, I've continued working with Kim. Uh, you know, she seems to have a good grasp on the administrative portion of what's going on and, um, try not to overwhelm her. I'll keep working with her. And I told her that, you know, even once I go, I will make it so that she can give me, get in touch with me. If she has questions, concerns, you know, I'm willing to help her out until, you know, uh, someone gets in this position.
You're, you're here tomorrow evening for extended hours too, right?
Yeah, I'm usually here till six on a Tuesday, but I'd probably be here later because I just have things I'm trying to accomplish.
Do you want us to come in and spend twenty minutes, half hour with you tomorrow night?
Uh, if you'd like, uh, or if you want-
I am. I would be out of town following this day, so I would be able to make that, so.
So like I said, I'm, I'm gonna put together, just, it's a binder with all the information so that, and one thing we did do that helps Kim a lot too, uh, is we create, Jill and I had created a handbook once I got in this position because it was, you know, and it's, uh, a, just what it says, a handbook. So if you want to put in a warrant, there's directions. If you want to do a turnover, there's directions. If you want, we've created this just for this department so that way, and it's been really helpful to her, so she knows what to do. So I'm gonna do the same thing, like I said, with this binder. The highway department site. They've completed the existing conditions, uh, survey. Let me see if I can just call that.
Yeah.
So, so this is the existing condition survey that, uh, was prepared by Alpha Land Survey. So that's the old police station. That's, uh, highway. Salt shed, the barn, the ball fields, parking lots, skate park, basketball court. So the one thing that's interesting, uh, you have an elevation, say, in this parking area around one twenty-five, one twenty-six, and then at the bottom of the hill, you have one thirteen, so you have twelve feet. So there's a good spot if a building was to ever be constructed near the street, you know, right into the hill. Gives them drive under capability and, uh,
How does it refer to the, the-
Space up top.
proposed engineering idea, the draft?
Uh, I'm hoping to maybe give you a preliminary picture before I go of what something might look like.
Like, like a rendering or, cause we have your draft plan.
Right, but basically now that I have this, uh, they did send an AutoCAD drawing, so I'm hoping to maybe be able to access it and draw something on there.
Use it like an overlay?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you send me a copy of that?
Yep. And then, uh, this area here, you see the basketball court and the skate park and, eh, if you just use that as a rectangle, that'd make a great spot for a second building in the future. Maybe, uh, maybe water department. Shh, shh, shh. Uh, so this part of this, this part has been completed. I reached out to land planning because they created the Form A plan. Uh, if we go along this line here, right along here, and it continues out to here and out to the street. They created the Form A plan, which was, uh, done some years ago that had gone before the planning board at the time. And on the night of the meeting, there was only three members and unfortunately only two voted for it, so that it, it died. So what I'm trying to do is I asked land planning if they'd be willing to and how much it would cost to get a mile out. So then that could come before the board and you could consider approving that Form A. Because in essence, on the ground physically, at all these angle changes, there are concrete bounds that were installed. So, uh, it'd be a formality if the board would be willing to endorse that Form A and move it along to get it, have it town council recorded at the registry.
Can I ask you a question just like you thought, Kent, is, uh, you know, I don't see the water line, I, you know, I have my glasses on at the moment. But, um, you know, that's not actually a pond, it's a river. So, uh, and we made this argument with conservation ten or twelve years ago that, uh, you know, there would be a two hundred foot buffer that should be, uh, recognized in this.
If we, using the GIS from about, I think, the back of the last storage shed to where the river, that's GIS. It says it's about six hundred feet. So.
Yeah, I just wanted, I think it's important to have that, uh, that buffer laid out on whatever plans go forward so that people are aware that, and I'm sure conservation will get involved, but you know, for signing it, uh, and endorsing it, we should have the, um,
Yeah, the minimum, maybe they could have, uh, maybe they can add a distance from, let's say, the property line or the building to, or the woods line or something, just the dimension to the top of bank for the river. So at least get an idea. Yeah, one thing that's, you know, obviously in the fu-
Tony, I'm noticing something. Any concerns with drainage? I'm noticing something up there.
Uh, one thing that may come into play at some point in time is, uh, there are three catch, three catch basins. Uh, one's down gradient of the salt shed and then it just kind of dumps out and finds its way. So, so I think at some point in the future, uh, hopefully, obviously if the, if, if, if and when the town moves forward with some kind of new highway building and you pave it, you're gonna have to deal with drainage anyway. So that was, that, that type of drain, that drainage would probably come out. But, uh, you know, I thought it was a, a bit of a fun fact that there's a catch basin sort of down gradient of the salt shed.
Well, I think they should have, uh, all the big piles of dirt and how far away from the river the toes are. And whether there's erosion control.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, you could keep going, but also-
Yes, yeah. So, uh, so that's where the, that's where they're at, that stage. And let's see.
One of the concerns that, uh, and a butter had reached out to me and had wanted me to ask him, though it's not in our jurisdiction per se, because it's a forty feet project. But I had somebody that I had read previous minutes and they were asking about SWIFT reports, or as they call it, P's reports. So I said, I think you're talking about SWIFT reports. Do you know if there's been any SWIFT reports that have been turned in in regards to the projects that are around town specifically? Two projects, one Spring Street and then the other one being, um, Mr. Ekins on Main Street?
There have not, I have not received them.
Okay.
I have not received them. I don't, I do not know if the conservation has received any.
I wonder if I should, I'm gonna reach out to, I'm gonna reach out to conservation and to the building department to find out if anybody has received any there.
Can I just ask a quick question? It's probably procedural, but you know, uh, it's my understanding that the planning board, that's jurisdictional, is store water management.
Yes.
So the SWIFT reports would come to us, not the ZVA. All right, so, and was asked for those, didn't we send a letter to the ZVA asking them to make sure that that's done?
I, I'm giving a current pledge, maybe it was submitted to building, maybe it was submitted to conservation, maybe it was submitted to water. I'm gonna reach out to the departments and find out.
Yep.
If, if, but maybe there were, maybe they've just been misplaced, you know?
Well, my, my hope is that they're being sent to this office.
All right.
That's what it's supposed to be.
Right, right, okay.
I can reach out to your conservation as well.
We've got some astute citizens that are reading minutes, which is nice, it's nice to see. Thank you very much for reading those.
Yeah.
Or listening to them.
Yep. Zoning bylaws are up at the AG's office. Like I said, I'm trying to put all this together into a, into a binder, you know, because I'm sure there's some things here that not coming to me at the moment. But that's what I have and just like to say that it's been an honor and a pleasure working with you guys.
Next time.
Uh, I think you're a good board, like I said before. I think you're fair. And you like to make sure that, you know, regulations are followed across the board all the way, which is good.
Trying.
So.
Yeah, absolutely, Alice. Room fourteen, has that progressed at all, what?
We've received monies from the state to do, we've received monies in about a hundred thousand dollars to go towards the subsurface utility engineering survey.
So for the record, Mr. Alice is, is requesting information about the tip project.
So we've received money for that, but it's, hasn't moved much beyond that. We, we just received the, the money was in the budget and I think the, waiting for the budget to get signed off and I think it already has been signed. So now that we have that money, will eventually come to the town. But there's still no movement as far as, um, the water district willing to do anything. So. So like I said, I'm gonna try and have all this in a binder so that you have a long understanding of what's going on and things that, you know, I think it should stay on top of.
So do you, you even have, what you hear like me by the time that-
I'm working on it, I'm working on it, I'm trying.
Like I said, the biggest thing I think is the master plan and, you know, stay on top of that.
Just trying to stay away from it.
Don't, don't lose-
I don't need a sunburn.
Don't lose, uh, don't lose sight of the master plan.
You got it.
You know? And, uh, with that, I, so, you know, that's all I have to say.
Any board members have anything for, go to the order? So the same back at you, Tony, I, I think I, if I could speak for the board. I think that the one, what we may have in the beginning considered a small thing that you have next to your name and that's that P has certainly taught us-
PLS.
PLS, sorry, PLS, has certainly taught us, uh, the significance and the importance of having that education. So thanks for having that. Uh, thanks for bringing that to the town Hanson. You've done yeoman's work in regards to some of the projects and some of the things that this town really needed to kind of get a boot in its gear here to move forward. Uh, you know, maybe have a golden pinfall to be able to get us to go and progressively move into the future. And, uh, I think that some of your recommendations and, and the short time you've been here are actually gonna- going to carry for a very long time for our town.
I hope so. I mean, I, you know, I'm hoping that they'll solve the problems that you have. That's all, excuse me, that's all my goal was here, is, you know, you have issues, that's, and solve them, you know. Try and address them and solve them in the best, because that's what we did in the private sector, you know, figure out how to solve a problem in the best and most efficient way possible.
Right.
And cost effective, so.
Appreciate it, and, and all the best to you in your next endeavors.
Thank you.
And I, I certainly, if you need anything from us on this, take to reach out.
Thank you.
Might not talk to you during OCPC meetings, but.
(laughing).
I have a question.
Mr. Ellis?
Did we accept his resignation?
Uh, so the.
For the meeting last night?
No, not on an official basis, last night. It wasn't on the agenda at that time because the letter was just presented. I don't necessarily want to say that we kept it from the agenda this evening, it's more of a procedural thing. We can certainly do that tonight, it just wasn't on the agenda. And, and some of the reason for that was, I think that there was some back office work and some conversations that were happening that we didn't have solidified answers on, not only from, from the town planner, but also sort of the offices in the town hall. We could certainly do that tonight if you.
Yeah, I think it's necessary if we do the hiring.
Sorry. So it's procedural for the, for the, we could do the, it's procedural for the resignation. At the same time, I'd like to inform the board, and I'm going to be reaching out with the board's consent, by the way, I want to ask, with the board consent, I'm going to reach out to the wager personnel chair to do a review of the, of the covered written town planner's draft description. Mr. Kement?
I kind of disagree in the sense that, it's always been my understanding, you know, I've been through a couple of hirings of employees, and spoke chairman on different boards, and he's actually here at the behest of the town planner, not the town planner, the town administrator, right? He reports directly to her. So I think it sits in the seat of the selecting to accept his resignation. We can certainly, you know, say, you know, like, so long with regrets, but technically, legally, and for the most part, he actually works for the town administrator.
Right, it's procedural, it would be procedural for us to make an acceptance and a recommendation to the board, the select board's meeting, so that they had the information from us, and then they could talk about the wager personnel.
Review Jim's. It's in the administration's behalf.
Yeah, the town administrator actually talks a little bit more about what the town administrator, who the town administrator is supposed to work with. So moving forward, as we move forward, then, as we did when, when Tony came on board, there was some open discussions between the town administrator's office and the, and the board itself. And we'll be looking for that again. But the administrators act, as far as resignations go, it's actually got to settle. You know, it's a procedural thing for us to be able to.
No, spell that one.
I read it today.
Did you?
Yeah, I read it today. So there's, there's no, like, this, if, if we don't accept Tony's resignation, that doesn't mean that he doesn't get to.
Oh, no, 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 it's just a procedural.
Yeah, so the procedural for us, part of the town administrator's act is for us moving forward to be involved with the process because the town planner works hand in hand with the board itself, so.
That's why we had, we had the right to.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, we recommend, not approve, we recommend. We make recommendations. So the only hiring is, is by the second.
So Joe, we looking for a motion?
Yeah, you can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask the selectmen to review, how do you want to word that? You just said the whole thing about, I'm in agreement with the vice chairman about it.
It's our recommendation, it's the planning board's recommendation to accept.
Okay, so.
Mr. Kement has a motion on the floor that the planning board recommended the select board to accept Tony DeFray's resignation reluctantly or regretfully as a town Hanson's town planner. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, also favors signify by saying aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
The town has placed the, the position on indeed, and I have placed it up on the mass planner forum, a link to it on the mass planner forum for that. I believe they did receive one application, one resume today. So I said, hire him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I saw that in the women's Hanson address.
Anything else to go to the order? The IT department has released an email address for the board itself, separate from the town planner's office. It's, it's planningboard@hanson-ma.org. So myself and our clerk. So myself and our clerk, we're going to get access into that, and then whoever's in the chair after this will move that forward. So we do have an official board email address, and it's just simplicity to have it as the one instead of everybody getting the wrong, because IT's still way down trying to get. It's planningboard@hanson-ma.org. So moving forward, we'll try to use that. And then also for the public listening tonight and looking at the minutes, the board itself, if you want to reach out to the board, as opposed to just the town planner's office, it's planningboard@hanson-ma.org. Keep in mind, and also know that sending emails into that, you may get an email back referencing you to the planner's office, if that's where the email or correspondence needs to go.
One other thing, Mr. Chair, is, moving forward, right now you're recording these meetings audio. I didn't know, you were looking to maybe do that as video as well?
Yeah, there was a request that came in about that, so, based off of some of the past meetings, so that's something we'll put on the agenda probably towards September timeframe to have a discussion about it.
And I will reach out tomorrow to town council regarding that.
Perfect.
Training.
Can I ask you a quick question? Yeah, Mr. Kement, I know the planning board itself has a, has a website, right? I mean, not a website, an email address now, right?
Yes.
My concern is, like, if someone were to request all emails related to something that happened in planning, we all use our personal email, right? So I think it would make more sense for us to all have a town email address that we use, so that if somebody was to say, we want to see all the emails that were sent in the month of June, I, I get probably eight, nine hundred emails a week easily.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you.
Don't relate to town business.
Yeah.
I don't really want somebody to see those.
Right.
Because they're private.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree 100%. I think that all of our elected, appointed, or I don't know about the appointed, but it's what, are elected, because certainly all of our employed officials have. So the discussions happen with the town administrator and working with IT, the new IT, to try to get that done. That's definitely something, that's one of my goals. Right now, I'm going to take the low hanging fruit, and we've given the one so far.
Okay.
Which I'm happy with, that we got that ball rolling, but I absolutely drew that. Moving forward, I think that, because it's a public record. Anything else?
If you'd like to set your next date, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, absolutely. So the tentative next date for our planning board meeting will be on Monday, August, what did I just, August 14th? Monday, August 14th. Is there a motion regards to that meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made.
For August 14th, 2023. So I likely won't be at that meeting.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second regards to August 14th?
Sure.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Benonato regards to our next planning board meeting for Monday, August 14th, 2023, same location, 6:30 PM in the select board meeting room, if it's available. Any discussion regards to that motion? Mr. Kement?
No.
You'll be in attendance?
I doubt it.
Mr. Kement won't be in attendance, thanks, appreciate it.
Sitting any other discussion?
None. All is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We will see everybody again on August 14th.
Congratulations, you did a good job.
Any other further business? Seeing none, unattended, motion to adjourn.